Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, at 6:01 PM, and I would like to call to order the City of Columbus regular meeting. The first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. Please join us. I'll make the motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting, November 13th. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other discussion questions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Next is a consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the November 13th, 2024, the City Council packet. Is there a second?
This is Janet. I'll second.
Any other questions or about the council minutes or anything?
He already polled the ones that I had the questions about.
Then I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in person or online at the public forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number two, the Rice Creek Watershed District Board Manager nominees, pages one through seven in our packet.
Thank you, Jesse. The city received notification from Anoka County that Stephen Wagaman's term as manager on the Rice Creek Watershed District Board is set to expire on January 17th, 2025. Anoka County is accepting applications and nominations for this position on the board. A copy of the public notice is exhibited in attachment one in your packet. Minnesota Statute 103D, point 311, allows cities located within the district to submit up to three nominees for county board consideration. Cities may jointly or severally submit their nominees. The county board must receive nominees if any by at least 60 days before the outgoing manager's term of office expires. To be eligible for appointment, nominees must reside within the watershed district boundaries, be eligible to vote in the district, and may not be a public officer of the state, county, or federal government. City does not need to make three appointment recommendations as described in a memo from the county. All city lists will be combined into one list for consideration. Steve Wagaman has submitted an application to the county and is requesting a formal nomination to support his application. Mr. Wagaman was the only applicant the city received for this position. The city advertised for this position on our website and Facebook page and our email mailing list. Attached is the motion in your packet as to the recommendation for reappointment.
Any questions, anyone?
I just have one question. Jack, do you know if there were any applications that were submitted to the county but not to the city because that's happened in the past?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Rob online. I was just curious, did we end up sending the mailer, like that mailer card like we did last time, Jack?
No, we didn't.
Maybe you weren't there at that time.
No, we didn't. We spoke about it, but there were 945 residents involved. The postage would have been around $600, so we elected the email website and the other list.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll make the motion to approve the recommendation of the reappointment of Steve Wagaman to the Rice Creek Board of Managers. Is there a second?
This is Janet. I second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Aye.
Item number three, City Hall Office Closure, December 24th, 2024. That's page eight of our packet.
City Council is requesting to consider a half-day closure of City Hall on Christmas Eve, Tuesday, December 24th, 2024. A half-day holiday is on the city calendar for this date, and city staff has asked for use of their vacation comp time to be approved for the remainder of the day. City Hall was closed in 2023 for Christmas Eve with the same request and conditions as requested above.
So I'll make the motion to approve the closure of City Hall on December 24th, 2024, for the non-holiday 8:00 AM to noon time period, as detailed in the staff report for this request. Is there a second?
This is Ron, and I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion?
So, quick question. I guess I'm not sure if I understand. I didn't read through this all the way. So they're going to use half a day for vacation, but it's going to be closed 8:00 AM to noon?
That was the period where it's going to be open?
Oh, that's open, okay.
Yeah. So then, on the calendar, the holiday then was Christmas Eve afternoon.
Okay, because it says, just in our, maybe it's in our, it's moved to approve closure of City Hall for non-holiday 8:00 AM to noon, so.
That's right. That's.
Because that's not, it is a holiday from noon till Santa Claus gets there.
So we're closed, but we're going to be closed all day then?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Got it. Anybody else? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Letter D, Consultant Liaison and Staff Reports, City Engineer.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. First item is in regards to the North Hornsby/Eureka Avenue project. We have authorized a couple permitting actions for that, for the permitting work associated with the project. Again, this, all of this doesn't obligate us to any project at this point, but getting the permitting taken care of. So Rice Creek has asked for another action from the City of Columbus, and it's actually related more to the Eureka Avenue segment than ours, but since we're kind of tied together, the Rice Creek Watershed District has asked us to sign this variance that's related to placing fill in the floodplain, which requires compensatory excavation in order to replace what's being placed in the floodplain. So there's more, there's 320 cubic yards estimated of fill to be placed in the floodplain, which is greater than the 100 cubic yard allowance, but since they can't get the compensatory excavation placed in that exact same floodplain area, they're requiring a variance. And so we're being asked to sign this variance, and it's a variance associated with Rule E, which is the floodplain alteration rule. There is a typo on the second page of that variance request that says F rule, but it should be E rule. We'll get that corrected. So in any event, we're requesting authorization for the mayor to sign this variance request.
Any questions, anyone? Then I'll make the.
No, no, no. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Too quick, too quick, too quick. I have a question about the fill. We have a whole bunch of dirt over there. Is there any interest that they would use that dirt to fill it? And could we sell it to them, and then we'll take a little bit off what we are going to have to pay towards this project?
I asked the question to the design team earlier, this probably even a couple months ago, letting them know that we had fill that could be available for the project, because I know we're trying to get rid of that. And they don't have a use for that particular type of fill. They're going to preload the roadway because there is peat underneath, so they're going to preload the roadway, but they're going to do that with gravel or with a Class 5, because they're going to incorporate that into the section of the roadway. So the fill that we have isn't of use to them.
Okay. And then the second question I have is, is Forest Lake paying all the fees related to this permit?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. That wasn't in the packet, but I surely was hoping that that was the case.
Yeah, yeah, there's no way that we'll pay for their variance. We'll sign them.
Stranger things have happened.
Well, yeah, no doubt, so.
All right. Those are my questions.
Thank you. So I'll move to approve the City of Columbus as a signatory to the variance request for the 2025 North Hornsby/Eureka Street project as required by the Rice Creek Watershed District. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Item, Letter B, the Wallock Letter of Credit. That's on page 20 of our packet.
So the Wallocks have never requested a release for their letter of credit until now, so the project is complete, and so we're recommending that the full letter of credit be released back to the Wallocks. And that's an amount of $645,893.
I'll make the motion to approve the Wallock Letter of Credit release.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is actually for Jack. It's a process question. So we had one of these just recently with another business that was requesting it. This project was done quite a while ago. Whose job is it to release this? Is it the city's job, or is it, do you wait for them to ask for it? And that's, I mean, it seems to me like we should have given this back to them a long time ago.
We normally wait for them to ask for it because they're paying to have that letter of credit instated.
Yeah.
And normally, everybody comes as soon as it's done to get that released as quickly as possible. So if it lays out there, and actually Jim and I had talked before, Jim was down there approximately a year ago and mentioned that to them, and they never followed up on his information about requesting a partial release, maybe that time up to 90%. So really, the burden on that is on the person that has the letter of credit.
I just know that we've had some issues with getting escrow amounts returned in a timely manner, and I was just thinking that, in the past, whether or not there should be a similar process for these.
I haven't seen too many of these that people don't come to us as quickly as possible to get that released.
Anything else?
No, I just think that we should have given it back to them a long time ago. I don't like the idea of the city sitting on somebody else's money.
Well, and again, they have to request the release, though, so we can mention it to them and say, hey, you might want to consider coming up and requesting a lease of your letter of credit. And in this case, there was that conversation, and they didn't do it. So this is one where we kind of, we want to get that off our books, so we reached out to them to make sure that they recognize that that was still outstanding and ask for the release.
And I think they were advised during the process of construction, too, that they have to make the request for the release of the letter of credit or a drawdown on it. And I think just being inexperienced developers, more experienced developers that we worked with have typically come in with, you know, requests to draw that down, so.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
All right. Then I'll make the motion to approve the Wallock Letter of Credit release per the recommendation of the City Engineer. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Ron.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Anything else? Nothing further. City Attorney?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I do not have a substantive item tonight, but I do have an instructional item tonight that I thought is helpful as we are conducting an interactive meeting this evening. And there has been some legislative changes over the course of the last five years with regards to how interactive technology is utilized so that, and you can all, of course, understand where those changes come from. In the pre-COVID days, interactive technology or tele, what's it called, they called it, like telecommuting for meetings was not part of the overall policy incentive of the open meeting law. And then during the pandemic, of course, we all shifted to attending meetings by Zoom or by any of the different platforms that are utilized, and special powers, special COVID powers were utilized to make those changes to the open meeting law. But then, sort of quickly, in the fading days of COVID, the legislature adopted a policy that required council members, when they attended more than three meetings remotely, to submit a doctor's note, which provided a whole slew of problems, of course, for cities with regards to retaining medical records, disclosing medical, it's very messy. They become public records, not good policy. And so the legislature did clean that up in this last session, and we are experiencing the effects of the legislative cleanup this evening. So here's the new solution. It is that every council member has three remote meetings that they can attend with no notice provided. That's the cap. After the three meetings have passed, then the council member needs to provide notice to your city administrator at least three days before the notice or the meeting will be held, consistent with when you distribute your packet, of where they intend to attend the remote meeting. And they have to make themselves available to the public in that place. And so, you know, council members who may travel often for work oftentimes utilize, you know, a conference room at their hotel as a mechanism to provide that public meeting place. It can also be the council member's hotel room if they feel so comfortable in that. And another city that I represented had a number of planning commissioners traveling to a planning convention. And at that point in time, we had a highly contested item that had come before the planning commission was going to come back, the Planning Commission for Public Hearing, and three of those council members were going to be discussing it via remote meeting. And we had citizens fly out to Philadelphia to attend the planning commission's remote meeting that they had, that we had properly noticed. So that may happen. So I encourage you all that if you do hit that number three and you move to taking those remote meetings in a place that is not here, that you consider the, you know, the thoughts, the feelings of your friends and family when you make that notice, in case you have a whole line of people standing out in front of your front door who are looking forward to observing you attend the remote meeting. The other factors that, of course, were complied with beautifully this evening was a roll call vote for each one of the votes when it is conducted remotely, so as to show the public that there is interactive communication between the member that is remote and the member that, and all of the members who are here this evening. You could all be remote except for one. There must always be one member who is present in the chambers for the remote technology exception to apply. So that is my instructional opportunity for this evening, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have about that.
I guess I just have one. So what you're saying is the first three, you don't have to give any notice or any note, and it can be for any reason. Do you have to be available to the public?
You do not.
You do not, okay. And then the subsequent ones, you can, you have to be available to the public, and you have to give a three-day notice. And there can be as many of those as, or is there only three of those also?
As many of those as possible, as you need, as needed. And the three-day notice is actually, the language in the statute is reasonable notice. And now, Jack and I talked about this a little bit yesterday. And I think reasonable notice is appropriate to be given at the time that we notice the regular meeting when we post the agenda packet. That gives people, should they wish to fly to find one of you at a conference around the United States, then they would be able to do so, so.
Okay.
That the reasonfulness of the three days is a city attorney interpretation.
Okay, thanks.
And if you're not in a place where the public can attend, then you're, and you're over your three-day, then you've just missed the meeting? Or how does that work?
So the, so the public can really attend at any place. There has not been case law or sort of examination of whether or not a place is comfortable for the public to attend. But the real crux here is that they have the opportunity to go to that place, that they know that place that the council member will be. And if they choose to monitor their attendance and participation, they have the ability to do so. But there isn't a distinction sort of drawn between whether that's been appropriately accommodated or not.
I just think, you know, if you're, I don't know, in a tree stand somewhere, that's just not going to be a publicly available place. If you're in Europe, you're probably not, really. So I didn't know if there was language that addressed those situations.
Not at this time, but I'm sure that revisions to the state law will provide opportunities for new factual scenarios.
Well, and you would have to be on camera, right?
Absolutely.
So if you were in a tree stand, you'd have to be able to get access to signal, right?
Well, it could happen. Some of those places up north have better signals than we do here.
That's true.
Okay.
Well, counselor, since the COVID thing, we've just always done the roll call vote. It started then. Do others, many other cities do that? I mean, it just seems automatic now for us.
Well, it's excellent, especially in the case that there is a split vote. It's very effective so that your minute taker and your clerk and the city attorney can record what the votes are and to make sure that that record is preserved. And that is an obligation of the city in regards to its minutes. So I think that is a great best practice to continue to do.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nothing.
This is Rob online. I was just curious through the mayor to Megan. Is this, is this a annual thing, like yearly, or is it per the four-year term?
That is a great question. I think the assumption, the historical language always tied it to three absences during the calendar year or the council year. And so I, my assumption is that that interpretation has continued.
And then, and then kind of going back to what Janet was asking about, if you send the city administrator notice three days prior, that can happen as many times? I mean, not saying you want to abuse it, but in the event that you needed to use it, you, you're able to do that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. All I have, Mayor?
City Council Members Report, Ron.
I have nothing.
Sue?
I have nothing.
I have a couple of meetings we went to, but Janet's going to go through those.
My turn?
Sure.
So the first one is Jesse and I attended the Anoka County Local Elected Officials Meeting on Wednesday, the 30th. So at that meeting, they addressed our resolution and other cities' resolutions for the post-election review. If you remember, we passed that and had requested it, as did, I think, four or five other cities in Anoka County. Anoka County submitted it to the Attorney General's Office, and the Attorney, the statute evidently reads that when you do a post-election review, they have to be precincts that are chosen at random. And because this would not fit as a random choice if we were directing the county to do our precinct and others were asking for precincts within their cities, the Attorney General's Office said that it was not allowed. So we are not going to have the post-election review that we requested. Normally, the county does, I believe, six precincts is what they said, and I think recognizing the fact that there was concern that that wasn't adequate to really assure that the integrity of the elections, they were going to up that to eight, but they would be choosing them at random. So that was the answer to the resolution that we submitted. I don't know if they're going to send anything out in writing about that, but that was, that was addressed by Brad Johnson, the county attorney. The other thing that they brought up was that Anoka County is updating their hazard mitigation plan. They do that every five years. And they are accepting public input during the process. They didn't have any specific process for that. They basically just said, if you have any comments to direct them to the group that is working on that, which is the, what is it? It is the Anoka County Emergency Management Director is who you address them to. So specifically, they're asking people to think about, you know, what are the natural hazards that you feel pose the greatest risk to your community? Are there specific populations or assets in your community that you feel are more vulnerable to future storm events? So they're talking about tornadoes, floods, things like that. And what concerns do you have, and what sorts of actions do you feel would help to reduce damages of future hazard events in your community or the county as a whole? So Jack, you might want to get this on the website. Just, I don't know if anybody will, will want to submit comments to that, but that was one of the things that they brought up. The other thing that we attended was the Rice Creek Watershed District Meeting on the 31st, which is when they were doing a comprehensive, kind of historical review of all the issues related to the ditch 102232. So Mayor Pryner was there, Jack was there, Jim was there, Kevin was there, Ryan was there. So nothing really got, I don't want to say accomplished, nothing was, it was more of a historical review. So they went back over sort of the whole long thing, but they didn't really end on like action items or anything like that. So I don't really have much else to say other than, if you're interested in reviewing the history of it, you can go and request a copy of the video that I'm sure that they took. I have an update on Midco, so I think I mentioned that we were working with Anoka County to get funding from their ARPA money that they had allocated for broadband, and then they decided not to put it towards broadband. And then we reminded them of the fact that they had this grant out there that we applied, we and others applied for. Long story short, we are going to get the money that we requested, which is great. We have to, we will have a contract sent to us by the county that will specify the amount that we get and that it has to be obligated by the end of this year, and it has to be spent by the end of next year. It will allow us to do the rest of the four areas in Columbus that don't have high-speed internet. So we will be starting the project next year. It'll probably go into the following year. There's a match of dollars with, from Midco and also a smaller match from the city, so we'll spend out the ARPA money first, and then we'll do the rest of it in year two from the county money, or I'm sorry, from Midco's money and our money. But that's really good news. I'm, I'm saying it in good faith that we're actually going to get it, and we're going to get the contract, even though we haven't yet, but that's what Commissioner Reinhardt is assuring us and Jim Dickinson, the county administrator. So, and when you get it, Jack, let me know.
I will.
Lastly, there was a Sunrise River WMO meeting on the 7th that I attended as a member of the board. There wasn't really a lot going on there. They just did an update on a shoreline stabilization project that they got funding from Bowser on, and Coon Lake is one of the lakes that they're doing that project. So they're soliciting interest from residents that have property on that lake, I think Martin Lake, and there was one other lake, Lynwood Lake, I think. So they'll be selecting the properties that they'll be able to do the shoreline stabilization projects on, I think in January, February-ish. The contract that is doing the work is Dunaway here in Columbus, so they got the bid to do that work. So it's kind of nice that they, they're able to do that. And I think that's it, other than when we talk about our personnel committee update.
Before we do that, Rob, do you have anything?
Nothing currently, Mayor. Nothing currently, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Then let's move on to our personnel committee. Janet and Sue.
So there was, you didn't copy me, so I'm assuming the memo that I wrote went out?
It did.
Okay. I don't have a copy of it, so I'm not gonna, I don't, I don't know it by heart, so I'm gonna assume you all read it. There were three parts to it. One has to do with confirming the hire of the accounting assistant, and her name is Brenda Oswald. If you have any questions, I'll pause, and you can ask them. Otherwise, I'll make the motion to move forward with that.
I have none. Go ahead.
Nope. Okay. So then I would move to confirm the hire of Brenda Oswald for the accounting assistant. She will start at step four, which is 2911 an hour on the pay grade scale for this position. In my memo, I noted that she has 20 years of accounting experience, which is why she's starting kind of in the middle of the range.
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
The second one is for the permit coordinator. So this is the position that replaces Carissa Krantz. We interviewed several folks for that, and the hire, the offer is being made to Lindsay Mooney, who is a Columbus resident. She will start at step one. She is currently a pharmacy tech and has a lot of the same skills in that job that we're looking for in this job. Step one is 2631 an hour, and she's starting at one because she is, she doesn't have experience actually in a municipal setting doing this kind of work, so we're starting her at the beginning of the pay scale.
And this is Sue. I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Hey, Jesse, this is Rob. I just, I think it's great that it was somebody from our community that we're able to land in that position, so I just wanted to share that. So, good job.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
And then lastly, we've been, we've been trying to solve the problem of getting minutes done for these meetings and done in a timely fashion. As you recall, we started earlier in the year with contracting with Time Savers and weren't happy with the quality of the minutes that we were getting. We talked to the person who's our media specialist. She was willing to give it a go, but realized that it was taking a lot more time than what she was willing to put towards that. So the staff is willing to take on the minutes for the Planning Commission, for the EDA, for, you know, Park Board, Fall Fest, things like that. But we are recommending as a personnel committee that we post a position, which would be a contract position, not an employee position, for a part-time recording secretary. The part-time amount would be about, we're estimating up to 15 hours a month, so it's very part-time. And it would be, as I said, it would be a contract position, not an employee, because it is such a, such a small amount of hours. So I am asking for the council to approve the posting of the part-time position for recording secretary as presented in the Personnel Committee report. The amount total per year is less than what we were spending on the Time Savers contract, so it is within budget.
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, this is Rob. So curious on, on why we want it to be contract versus an employee. I know, as I realize, they're not going to get benefits after 15 hours, but what is the reason why we want to have contract versus an employee? Janet?
It's a good question. We did talk about this in the Personnel Committee. So there's, there's some guidelines that are usually used to determine what would be, what would be appropriate as an employee position versus a contract position. So the questions that you ask are things like, you know, does this person have regular hours? Can they work, you know, do they, do they have full discretion in how they do the work? Do they use their own equipment? All of that is true. We're not going to provide a computer. This person can either come to the meeting, they can watch the video, they can, you know, they basically can do it whenever it makes sense for them. So they're really working independently and with their own resources to get the job done. So that fits more in the category of a contractor than an employee.
So it kind of fits that nine-step plan where whether you're a subcontractor or not?
Yep.
There was one other thing that we talked about, wasn't it?
Even if it was a part-time, 15 hours a month, they would still get the, some benefits.
The safe and sick time, but that's not, not true if they're a contractor.
Right. Yep. And that, so that was one of the reasons.
So you're, so you're right. They're not, they aren't, they, it's not a benefits eligible if they're contracting. It'll just be an hourly rate for the services provided.
Yeah, they'll be expected to pay that benefit on their own behalf.
Correct.
I would, okay. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, nay.
And Jesse, aye.
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Planning Commission report. Sue?
I think it got canceled. Luckily, because I have no notes from that meeting.
Anything else you'd like to add while you have the floor?
No, we rescheduled.
Yep.
To next, next week, the 20th.
Don't forget. Public Works, Jim?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
City Administrator, Jack?
Thank you, Jesse. I'd just like to give two big thank yous. One to Councilmember Haglen for all of her work on the grant for Midco. Without her efforts, we probably would not have received that, so I commend her highly and appreciate what she did, and also the assistance she gives us on all the other fronts. The other thank you I would like to give is to our city staff, who worked tirelessly, effortlessly, and a lot of hours in making sure that our 2024 election ran flawlessly. We were two staff members short, and our election coordinator, Lori Spangler, assisted by Eleanor Hahn and Cheryl Jenkins, did a fantastic job, along with all the election judges, and I thank them for their efforts.
So Jack, one of the things that, when I was looking at the, the report that you gave us, I was, it's like almost half of the ballots cast were cast as absentee ballots, and I am assuming most of them came through this office, not mailed to the county. So the fact that the staff that you had handled all of those in addition to their normal daily work, I know that when we, you know, the second half of the direct balloting, we brought in an election judge to help, but holy smokes, I mean, that was, that's 45 days of extra work. So I agree with you. They really deserve kudos.
It, it's a testimony to their devotion to their work and their positions. Not only did they do their election work, they did their normal work, too, in addition and on top of that.
And also recovering for the empty positions.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right. Here, here.
I second that.
All right. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, we're off the hook for two more years, right? One more year.
Year and a half.
All right.
Did Jim, did, did you say no report, Jim?
No report for me, no.
Anything else?
Up to the deer stand.
So, letter E, park board meeting November 19th, Planning Commission meeting the 20th, EDA the 21st, EDA regular meeting the 21st, City Council on November 25th. Is there anything anyone would like to add before we adjourn?
Are we, can I, are we having our EDA meeting at Running Aces?
Oh, yeah. I had a question, too. What is that?
No, I'm sorry. That, I put that in as a placeholder, that a member of the Running Aces staff will be at our EDA meeting to talk about the lodging tax.
Oh, good. Okay.
That was an edit that I missed and should have been taken off.
All right. Thank you.
In that case, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Our meeting is adjourned at 6:40.